Good evening. Good evening. Could I ask you to take your seats, please? And we will begin the board meeting for this evening. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome to our board meeting. A regular board meeting of Tuesday, May the 2nd. For your information, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. So I would like to begin with an opening prayer from trustee Ingrid.
Jesus. Students of Jewish tradition, as you grow into adulthood, even within your own holy family, there was at times misunderstanding, anxiety, and conflict. Yet you grew by walking forward together with Mary and Joseph, not only to the temple in Jerusalem, but also on your journey as a family. Help us to weather the storms of change in our own families and to be faithful to the members of our first and most basic community of faith. We make this prayer through the intercession of Mary and Joseph, who nurtured you and brought you into the fullness of life. Amen. A reading from the Gospel according to Luke. Glory to you, O Lord. Now, every year, his parents went to Jerusalem for the festival of the Passover. And when he was 12 years old, they went up as usual for the festival. When the festival was ended and they started to return, the boy, Jesus, stayed behind in Jerusalem, but his parents did not know it. Assuming he was in a group of travelers, they went a day's journey. Then they started to look for him among their relatives and friends. When they did not find them, they returned to Jerusalem to search for him. After three days, they found him in the temple, sitting among the teachers, listening to them, and asking them questions. And all who heard him were amazed at his understanding and his answers. When his parents saw him, they were astonished. And his mother said to him, "Child, why have you treated us like this? Look, your father and I have been searching for you in great anxiety." He said to them, "Why were you searching for me? Did you know that I must be in my father's house?" But they did not understand what he said to them. Then he went down with them and came to Nazareth and was obedient to them. His mother treasured all things in her heart, and Jesus increased in wisdom and years and in divine and human favor. The Gospel of the Lord. Praise to you, Jesus Christ. What is it about this finding in the temple which is of such significance? There are many things. For example, that Jesus was already well aware of his identity and mission, and he was comfortable in his father's house. The temple and his teachings was already compelling, even to the teachers in the temple at 12 years old. However, it is the last line which tells us something of extraordinary implications for those who live out the vocation of Christian marriage and family. Jesus left the temple and went home to Nazareth, where he submitted himself to the authority of Mary and Joseph and established the holy family. In the holy way of life, they lived as a model for the Christian family, a path to the holiness and the first cell of his church. There, he lived, learned, and loved in a new temple where God still dwells. Jesus is the Lord. He is the incarnate Word, the second person of the Blessed Trinity. Wherever he is, God dwells. He told us, "Wherever two or three are gathered in my name, I am in their midst." The place where that happens most often is the Christian family. Jesus lives in our home. Oh, great Creator, we give praise and thanks to you for our lives and for our families. Your gift to us of communion and community is one of our greatest blessings. We thank you for our elders, our grandfathers and grandmothers, whose patience and wisdom guides us. We thank you for our fathers and mothers, who by giving their love to us brings us into the world, nurturing and leading us. We thank you for our brothers and sisters, with whom we somewhat know what sharing and caring really means. We thank you for young people, whose hopes for a better world energizes and inspires us. We thank you for the little ones, the children, whose innocence and promises bring gladness and joy. Oh, great Creator, may our families always be that blessed and first community we honor and cherish. As you continue to make all things new, may we hear your invitation in all creation to receive and share all that is good and true with each other. Oh, God, we also face many challenges and crises in our lives and world. May our families continue to be the first and constant community that shows us how to live intimately and respectfully with all people in all creation. May glory, praise, honor, and thanksgiving be shown to you, Father of all mercies and information, Jesus Savior and guardian of our soul, and Spirit of peace and communion. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you for a beautiful prayer, Ingrid. Thank you. Thank you for a beautiful prayer, Ingrid. Are the motions adopted in camera? Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. A motion regarding property was adopted in camera in a Human Resources Activity Report. Retirements are Laura Agro DeRosa, Diane Brennan, Catherine Ann Burns, Debbie Serniye, Maureen Morrison, and Paula Ground. These retirements are effective June 30th, 2017. Acting elementary principals, we have Nelson Costa and Marie Marad, appointed as acting elementary school principals, effective September 1st, 2017. Tracy Babic, Blaine McCauley, and Anna Marie Total are appointed as elementary school vice principals, effective September 1st, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. We have additions to the agenda, and I have a few, but trustee Marad?
The first is a notice of motion on 2015 Oakville Secondary Bounder Review Basing.
That will be item 10.7. No other additions? Okay, trustee Dankel?
Yes, I have a notice of motion.
Yes.
Regarding Employee Assistance Program.
Any others? No? All right, so just to update trustees, under Information Items after 10.4, would you please add 10.5, the prayer that we are considering for consultation, the Angelus? The director will be speaking to this. Item 10.6 is the ICE presentation. Superintendent Nah, you'll be speaking to this. 10.7, the Notice of Motion, 2015 Oakville Transportation, trustee Marad, and 10.8, EAP, trustee Dankel. Any other additions? All right, thank you. Can I have a mover for approval of the agenda, please? Trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by trustee Carabella, all in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? I believe so? Okay, thank you. For the presentations, it will be 4.1, the Proposed 2017 Amendment to the 2013 Education Development Charges EDC Bylaw. Superintendent Nagoy will be speaking to that, but before that, I will be giving an introduction. We've dealt with this before, trustees. Those of you who are on the board the previous time around, I believe we dealt with this in 2013. And again, I tell you that I have to read this exactly as it is, word for word. Whether you wish to disagree with how it's formatted or otherwise, that is what I have to do, and so that is what I will do before turning it over to our guest, Mr. Brad Tyckman, and of course, Mr. Tebow, and superintendent Nagoy. So bear with me. Script for public meeting for the Proposed 2017 Amendment to the 2013 Education Development Charges Bylaw, to be held May 2nd, 2017. Opening remarks from the chair. The Halton Catholic District School Board is proposing to enact an amendment to its Education Development Charges Bylaw, which was passed on June 18th, 2013. The 2013 EDC Bylaw applies to land in the region of Halton. The proposed amendments to the 2013 EDC Bylaw, which would increase the charges, are required because the land values that were relied upon to calculate the charges under that bylaw have proven to be conservative in relation to the prices at which lands are currently trading in the market. In other words, land values, including the value of school sites, have escalated at a greater pace than was anticipated at the time the board passed the 2013 EDC Bylaw. The amendments to the 2013 EDC Bylaw are required to ensure that the charges keep pace with the rapidly escalating land values. The board will be conducting a public meeting this evening as part of the process of passing the amending bylaw. By way of background, the primary purpose of any board in implementing education development charges is to provide a source of funding for new school sites in growth-related areas. These are not funded by any grant under the province's funding formula. The EDC calculation is based on new pupils generated by housing units within the bylaw area, for which building permits will be issued over the 15-year period following the enactment of the bylaw, and for which additional school accommodation is required. We are seeking input from the public tonight. As you may be aware, the board will likely be given final consideration to the passage of an amending bylaw at its public meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. This evening, we will first be inviting Frederick Tebow and Brad Tyckman, the solicitor for the board, to briefly address the proposed amending bylaw and the basis for the amendment. Following that, we will invite delegates who have indicated a desire to speak to come forward in turn and let us hear their views on the proposed bylaw. After everyone has been given an opportunity to speak, the board will consider the staff report, which is listed as item 9.2 on the agenda. We would now ask Fred Tebow and Brad Tyckman to make a presentation on the methodology and calculations which underlie the proposed EDC amendments, as well as the legal requirements that must be satisfied before the board can pass an amending bylaw. Gentlemen?
Thank you. For those who haven't met, this is Mr. Brad Tyckman. He is our solicitor for the board in regards to EDCs and has been with us for a number of years in undertaking this role and project. That said, as Madam Chair pointed out, we're here tonight to, again, undertake another review of our Education Development Charges Bylaw, which, again, is precipitated by the fact that we're seeing a very high rate of increase in our per-acre land value within the region of Halton. So again, with the intent of keeping with the pace of increasing land values, we're again here to make an amendment to the Education Development Charges Bylaw, so that we can continue to purchase the sites that we need on an ongoing basis to accommodate for new growth. So again, just to provide a little bit of a summary as to what an education development charge is, it's very comparable to what a development charge at a municipality is. It's a charge that's imposed under a bylaw that's regarding new pupil places or new net educational growth and the land cost associated to it in accommodating this growth and the purchase of new school sites. It's also the revenue that we use to prepare these school sites for the ultimate capital construction of our schools. And as pointed out by Madam Chair, this is our primary source of funding for acquiring school sites within this region, and we are an EDC-eligible board, which is advantageous to us, so we don't have to ask the ministry every time we need to buy a site for funding, which would become extremely expensive, especially given the rate of increase. So when we first passed the bylaws, to give you a little bit of history as to how the charge has been increasing over time in relation to the land values, the initial bylaw that was passed, we were charging about $1,400 per unit and about 38 cents per square foot. Our first amendment in 2014, we increased that rate to $1,800 approximately and 47 cents per square foot. In 2015, again, we enacted another amendment to the bylaw, which further increased it to about $2,170 for a residential unit and about 56 cents per square foot for non-residential components or commercial industrials and things of that nature. At that time, the bylaw was appealed through the OMB by the building industry and land development industry built. And effectively, what they were concerned with and what they were appealing was the methodology that we used in calculating the charge. Now, the biggest question was the amount of units that we were removing from the total 15-year horizon of the bylaw. Given that it was the second year of the bylaw, we removed two years of units. Their argument was that we shouldn't be changing that in the first place, and eventually, through mediation, we did come to an agreement where we would only remove the actual units that were built over the course of the two years and retain the total amounts as part of the three-year. This said, in this course, we've applied the same methodology as was mediated last year, so we expect that build will at least be okay with the methodology. Now, there's still other things to be discussed, but at least the methodology we're good with. The other thing, too, is how we determined the allocation between residential and non-residential with the total land cost that's associated over that 15-year horizon. Eighty-five percent of it is going to be charged to the residential, whereas the other 15% will be the non-commercial. So that is the share of the whole non-residential part. That's why Brad's here. I'll let Brad speak to the legislation specifically for amendments.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Madam Chair, members of the board, there's, because this is a bylaw amendment, there are an amendment to an EDC bylaw, there are legal requirements that have to be satisfied, but those requirements are much less onerous than if the board was passing a new bylaw. So it's just an amendment. So the requirements are, excuse me, the board has to give notice of the proposed amendment to the bylaw. Fred and his staff have done that by publishing the notice in the local papers, so the general population as well as the development industry is aware of what's going on as well. The board has to make information available to the public so that members of the public can understand generally what the basis for the amendment is. And part of the report for the agenda package is this report that was prepared by the board's EDC consultant, Watson and Associates, this document, which sets out nicely in summary form all the calculations and all the assumptions that underlie the proposed bylaw, the proposed amendment. And then the third requirement is, the board is required to give the public an opportunity to express their views on the proposed amendment to the bylaw. That's the purpose of the meeting this evening, and I think we'll see that there's nobody here to speak to the matter. I don't know if that's a lack of interest, or, can't say, or, I'd like to think it's because they agree with what we're doing, that I'm being a little optimistic. But anyways, finally, on this page, this part of the presentation, the board is allowed to amend its bylaw once in every 12-month period following the date the bylaw came into force. The bylaw came into force in June of 2013, so then June 2014, '15, the board can amend the bylaw, but only once within a one-year period. The last amendment took place in 2015. We skipped '16 because of the appeals that went to the OMB, so we're now in '17, so it's clearly the board is within the one-year period. There's no question about that. So following the meeting this evening, given that this is the opportunity for the public to speak, the board will have the legal authority to pass the amending bylaw. It's then a matter of discretion, of course, for the board members, whether they think it's appropriate to do that, but as far as the legal requirements are concerned, the board will have satisfied those this evening, together with the preliminary work that was done by Fred and the board's EDC consultant. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. So again, usually we start with why. So why are we doing this amendment? Again, the major thing that's happening within the Halton region is that very high rate of escalation with per-acre land value. So that's one of the main reasons why we're opening up the bylaw, we're looking to doing an amendment, to make sure that we're keeping pace with that increase and that our charge is reflective of what the actual cost of land is. We want to make sure that we're collecting enough revenues as a board to cover the cost of purchasing land on a go-forward basis. As you know, we still have a number of sites that are in North Oakville that are coming down the pipeline. We have the Milton sites that are coming, and eventually, sooner rather than later, we'll be seeing the New Vision Georgetown ones as well. So it's coming rather quickly, and we need to make sure that we're keeping pace and that we're also doing our best to reduce that fund deficit, the overall deficit that the board currently has in EDC expenditures, which to date, as you'll see in the report at a later time, is around $39.6 million. So every time we're about to buy new sites in the next few, so again, we're going to see an increase. Now, the other thing to be cognizant of as well is that the board does have a borrowing limit that we approved a little while back, and we want to make sure that we're well below that threshold. Usually 60% is the danger zone. We want to stay well below that total borrowing limit, what we currently have on the books. That said, we did retain Cushman and Wakefield, the same appraisal that we've used for a number of years since 2013, when we started the first bylaw, to do an update on the overall regional land values per acre in Oakville, Halton Hills, and Milton. So if we go back to 2013 and we compare all the way to 2017, Oakville, we've seen an overall increase of about 235% in per-acre land value. Milton and Halton Hills come in closely at about 200% increase between the 2013 period and 2017, just since the last bylaw that we had recently amended. You know, we've seen a range of increase between 30 to 47%. Now, these are not values that I've been assuming, these are values based on comparable land sales within the areas. Recent land purchases is done by school boards as well as the general market. So what we're seeing is that, again, is a high rate of increase, and we need to keep up with that. Now, how we calculated the proposed amendment charges, again, what we look at is the total 15-year horizon land expenditure. We look at what we currently have in terms of our EDC reserve or shortfall fund. And then we also have to look at what the future education development charges, study costs are going to be incurred over that 15-year period, because again, every five years, we have to restart the whole bylaw again. There's a cost of that, and every year we do an amendment, there's a cost of that as well. Overall, what we're seeing is about, oh, what we're seeing is about $185 million in that entire period. And if you remember, when we were looking, 85% of that total cost will be attributed to the residential component and 15 to the non-residential component. So then we calculate by looking at our residential growth-related educational cost is approximately $157 million. The total number of units that we expect for the next...
Fifteen years?
Thirteen, because we removed the actual builds. It's about 69,500 units approximately. So what we do is we divide the total value of land, we multiply by the ratio of 85%, and then we divide that by the total number of units, which gives us our $2,269 charge per residential unit. The same is done for the non-residential component, where we have approximately, I'm using round numbers, 27 million. We expect about 48 million new square feet to be developed based on what the region anticipates in employment, industrial, commercial, or anything non-residential, and that gives us an approximate charge of 58 cents per square foot. In terms of the public process, as Brad has already mentioned previously, we gave notice of the amendment in all new local newspapers on April 6th. We circulated via email this notice as well, just so we hit them twice in case we didn't read the paper that morning. And then now we're having our May 2nd public meeting. We advised Build of our intention to do this soon after that we had provided the board with our information report back in January, saying that we're looking at doing an amendment so that we could give them ample time to understand and know what we're going to be undertaking within the next few months. The next step in the process, is where we are today, is again, to meet with Build. And then, secondly, we'll be coming back at the June 20th, regular board meeting, to put forward the motion that's within the staff report, 9.2, at tonight's meeting, and go forward for approval. Once that's been done, we will provide a notice, again, in the papers, as well as provide a direct email and a letter to the agencies that want to be notified of this, via mail, via email, and it will also be posted on our website. And then afterwards, at the end of it, all the bylaw will come into force five days after the night it was passed, so that would be June 25th, 2017, when the new rates will come into effect. So, next steps, this will be the final amendment we can do to the 2013 EDC bylaw, as it expires on June of 2018. So next year, just to give you a little bit of heads up, we're going to have to be reopening the entirety of the bylaw, so it's going to be the full process that we'll be undertaking, and we're going to be starting more than likely in the early 2018, 2019, or 2017, 2018 school year. So I just wanted to give you guys the advance warning of this. We're here to answer any questions that you may have, or we can pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions from trustees, comments, questions? Okay, we'll continue on then. We do not have any members of the public to speak, so we'll continue. We welcome the information we have received this evening. We now conclude the public meeting and turn to a discussion of the proposed amending bylaw. As mentioned previously, the board will be giving final consideration to the passage of an amending EDC bylaw at its public meeting scheduled for the evening of Tuesday, June 20th. This concludes... This concludes the proceedings concerning the E D C bylaw. Now, uh, trustees, as, uh, on your agenda, under item nine point two, staff reports, we do have the two thousand and seventeen joint review of the two thousand and thirteen E D C development charges. We can go straight to that, since, uh, our mind is in this E D C area right now, or we can continue with the agenda as presented, it's your choice. Do you want to continue on and do nine point two now? I have two nodders, and everybody else is silent, so, uh, then we will continue on. So superintendent Nagoy, if you wouldn't mind? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the presentation just provided trustees with the background information on the current amendment process, um, and we, uh, do plan to come back to, for trustee approval at the June twentieth meeting, and I'd like to, um, um, pass it on back to the trustees if, uh, there's any questions for us, as we have, uh, Brad and Fred, uh, here as well.
Are there any questions at all to the report? Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Do we anticipate Build, uh, having any resistance to this, or just the fact that they're not here, does that really say anything? Because I think moving forward, do they have any opportunity to respond?
Um, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. No, we don't anticipate any issues with Build, but the fact they're not here is not indicative of that point. It's because, um, as a result of the settlement achieved at the Ontario Municipal Board, we've agreed with Build on the formula that's to be used for calculating a revised charge in the context of an amendment to the bylaw, so the only issue is, I think the only potential issue with Build will be, um, what the land values are. As Fred mentioned, the board retained Cushman Wakefield, or qualified appraisers, to come up with current values for the school sites that the board is looking to acquire, or will be looking to acquire over the fifteen-year period. So if they have any dispute with the land values, that'll be something we discuss with them. I know we've asked Build to meet, uh, so far, we haven't been able to, uh, find a mutually convenient time, but we'll be meeting with them probably next week, um, so we'll learn then if there's any real issues, but we don't anticipate serious opposition from them. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, trustees, on page twenty-three of your package, you will see the, uh, recommendation that will come back to you at, uh, and later meeting, and so just, uh, in case you have any questions on that. Um, otherwise, we will move on. Superintendent Nagoy? That's all right, um, Fred and Brad? Thank you, Mr. Tyckman, appreciate you coming again, as always. Thank you. Thank you also to the staff for all the work on this particular project. All right, so now we will move on to the approval of the minutes. Uh, six point one, the April eighteenth minutes, can I have a mover, please? Trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by trustee Marai. Any questions to the minutes? If not, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, business arising from the minutes? I don't think there was much. Yes, it was the delegation to the board approval. All right, nothing new there? Okay, so now we will go on to our, um, action items, of which we have none. Staff reports, nine point one, renaming of Mother Teresa Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Overholt.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. The report, report before trustees tonight is regarding the change of name of Mother Teresa Catholic Elementary School to Saint Teresa of Calcutta Catholic Elementary School. Uh, we have been blessed to have been able to live during a time when in the, the individual, individuals were able to witness the works of Mother Teresa. She was one of the most influential women in the church's two-thousand-year history, where her work was amongst the poorest in the world. Her words, and more importantly, her actions, has influenced and made a difference for people all over the world. With her canonization on September fourth, two thousand and sixteen, the name of our current elementary school should be changed to Saint Teresa of Calcutta Catholic Elementary School. The renaming of the school has been discussed and confirmed with Chancellor Monsignor Murray Kretsch, and an action item will be forwarded on the May sixteenth board meeting. We happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Overholt. Any questions? None? All right, thank you. So we're moving on to information items. Uh, ten point one, student trustee update, and before I ask Ingred, I have to say, we were all together at the O C S T A conference, uh, the last few days, and, um, very, very proud of our student trustees, they're just an amazing threesome, and, uh, it truly is a joy to spend time with them, as we learn more about, uh, Catholic education, O C S T A. So we appreciate them being here. Uh, so, student trustee update, trustee Ingred.
Thank you so much. Um, so, uh, as Chair Vendo was saying, Manuela, Christine, and I had, had the pleasure of attending the O C S T A Annual General Meeting last weekend, and I think I can speak for all three of us when we say that it was an absolute pleasure to have the opportunity to attend the really informative breakout sessions about Catholic education, and listen to people like Steve Paken and the Honorable Mitzi Hunter speak, as well as spend time outside of the boardroom with our wonderful trustees and board members, that was my favorite part. Um, so tomorrow, uh, Student Senate is hosting a leadership conference from eight-thirty to one-thirty at Corpus Christi Secondary School, with a theme around building strong school relationships, and we are kind of gearing this conference more towards secondary school students, and how they can make a meaningful impact on their school community. Uh, the whole event in itself is kind of very active and engaging, and we designed it in a way that the students were not gonna be sitting around for a long period of time or, uh, or listening to people speak, but, uh, they're always up and, uh, implicated in something, or active in something, and, um, we would, uh, love for, for all of you to attend, and if you would be interested in coming out and seeing what kind of activities we have planned for the students, feel, please feel more than free to wel, uh, more, please feel more than welcome to, and, um, I would be happy to make accommodations for when you would like to come out, it's just, it's a very active conference, so the students won't be kind of sitting around in a theater all day. Um, a week ago today, Senate also held their annual student trustee elections, and Christine and I are beyond thrilled to say that we will have the pleasure to work with everyone here again, as we've both been re-elected as student trustees for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen term. And, uh, I, this has been one of the best experiences of my school career, and it's taught me so much, and, uh, we're also very excited to announce that we do have, uh, incoming for, uh, Oakville student trustee, which is Anna Maria Barbul, who is, uh, also Senator, and she is amazing this year, she helped us out so much, and she's gonna do amazing in this role, even though it breaks her hearts to say goodbye to Manuela. And applications for Student Senate will be coming out May fourth. Uh, this is something new, we're gonna be trying this year, um, by picking our Senator members, uh, before the start of the school year next year, uh, we are allowing for us for, to have more meetings and kind of hit the ground running right in September. Uh, while usually, um, in our past year, we've kind of lost September and October as working months, because we've been, uh, sending out applications and choosing Senators during those months, so now we have those two extra months to work on initiatives. Uh, we are also really excited to be attending the O C, O S T A Annual General Meeting at the end of the month, and this is gonna be our first conference that Anna Maria is going to attend with us, and we're gonna, we are very excited to have her come with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Manuela.
Um, can I also just add, um, like it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, um, it is Catholic Education Week this week, um, and actually, O S T A's, like Catholic Board Council actually made a video for this week for Ontario Catholic Student Youth Day. Um, it should be tweeted out, and it's also found on the website, um, O S T A's website and the O X T A website, so if you guys would like to tweet that out and get that going, that's cool as well. We also made one for the Halton Catholic District School Board, which, um, kind of what we tried to compose the video was to get each Senate, so there's nine different clips of a different word that, um, defines what Catholic education means to that school. Uh, we were very proud with how the video turned out for our school board, and we're working with Ms. Swindon on getting that on the website and tweeting it out, so if you guys don't mind kind of tweeting that out as well, so it's, um, spreading the word on how Halting Catholic sees, um, Catholic education.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Christine?
Well, the girls kind of said it all, but, um, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you next year, and I think it's going to be a great year, knowing, coming into it, this has been such an amazing opportunity, and I'm so very grateful to be here and to be here next year as well. So, thank you, guys.
Well, I think the pleasure is ours to have you all. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, I guess our next item is ten point two, school educational field trips. Superintendent McGillicay.
Through you, Madam Chair. Presented for information are the approved school educational trips, and I will take questions at this time.
Trustee Michael?
Yeah, it's in Ontario.
Get clarification for next, uh, next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have clarification, trustee Michael. You can go and visit, okay?
That's our board.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, ten point three, the renewed math strategy update. Superintendent Pocassan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce two of the curriculum team. We have, um, Melissa Carnello, who is our math consultant, and, uh, Jackie Mickel in the math dress is our facilitator, our math facilitator, we call it her math dress. I don't know whether they're sitt-